Twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Ms. Jones, will you please call the roll? Present.
Mr. King?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
U List? Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Thank you. Please feel free to join me for tonight's prayer and pledge. My God, I thank you for the many blessings that you provided me and my family. We ask you to be with us tonight within our community and our country. We ask for your guidance. It is in your name that I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. McDonald. Kelly? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bagnar?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Approval is accepted. Next on the item or the agenda is citizens' comments. Ms. Jones, do we have somebody listed on tonight?
We have one. Barton Nash.
Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Barton Nash. Live at seventy-one twenty-eight Elrod Road.
All right, we welcome your comments tonight. We just try to ask all citizens to keep it to three minutes, if you will, please.
I don't get the full fifteen. I think I can keep it to three.
Thank you, sir.
Do appreciate your time and do want to be respectful of that. I've lived there on Elrod Road for a while. In fact, I was around in two thousand eight when the original plan for what's now the Bellhaven Development was being discussed. That's what I'd like to talk to you a bit about tonight. The been a fair amount of contentious discussion around that development, you know, from day one. But basically, it was approved at that time with the belief that the Water Authority of Dixon was going to bring enough sewer capacity to do all the development that Fairview wanted to do for the future and the amount of development that that amount of capacity that that development needed. Only thing that was discussed around, you know, sewer capacity for that development then was traditional gravity-fed municipal sewer. That was the only thing that was, as far as I know, was being discussed in Fairview at all at that time. So that's what was approved. That's what the original plan was. Property changed hands a few times since then. But as it stands today, as far as I understand, Water Authority Dixon still is not going to provide traditional sewer capacity that's capable of supporting that development as originally planned. So with it being impossible to develop the plan, develop the property according to the original plan, new plan came before Planning Commission in December. That was presented by the developers, brought to you guys. And argument was made that it was significantly compliant with the original plan. And in fact, it was approved with the assumption, belief that it was substantially compliant with the original plan in spite of changes to street layouts and lot layouts and more specifically that it no longer contained plans for traditional sewer system, but an on-site step system. And it all hinged amongst several factors, but one of the main ones was around whether or not that was a change of land use. So the decision was made that it wasn't and that it was substantially compliant. So say you guys got a lot of hard work to do to make decisions around these sort of things. But I'd like you to consider whether or not that was an appropriate decision in that the development clearly intended to be, you know, traditional sewer originally. Based on the size of the pipes they had, the fact that there was pumping stations all over the property, you know, all that was removed and property that had been set aside for housing was now set aside for the step system. There really wasn't any way to do that system in the original plan. Argument was made that this was somehow substantially compliant, even though I think most people logically would say putting a step system on property that used to have houses is a change in land use. The current zoning ordinance gives clear instructions for how to include these type of systems when you're planning a development. It requires that they be part of the original master development plan. It specifically requires that green space that'll be used for step systems be designated as to that use on the original plan. You guys are aware, if a plan changes significantly, it's supposed to come back as a new plan, go back before the Board of Commissioners. And I believe that's what should have happened with this plan then. Other developments that have included on-site sewage, as far as I know, have all included that as part of the original development plan. No one's ever come back and changed that at a later point, as far as I know. I did a bit of research and couldn't find any plants that had changed in that way. So I think sound logic could lead you, should lead you to conclude that this was not substantially compliant as the decision was made in December. And my understanding is the developer is now trying to get you to remove some of the agreements that they made in December in order to get the plan approved then. So I'd like you to consider that this property really still cannot be developed in a way that's significantly compliant with the original plan. And the right thing to do is have this plan go back through as a new master development plan. Really just can't go forward with the type of development they need to do under today's capacities and the technology that's available for processing sewage under a plan that was devised in two thousand eight. And you can't make a plan that works that way compliant with the one from two thousand eight.
Mr. Nash, I apologize, but if you could wrap up your comments.
I am wrapped up right now.
Thank you very much.
That's the summary of my point that I'd like you to consider if any way possible that, and the main thing is that that decision set a precedent. Basically, it says Water Authority Dixon and developers can decide to put sewage treatment on any residential property in Fairview. That's what you can conclude from the logic that was used to approve this in December. It's a dangerous precedent.
We thank you for your comments tonight. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second. Donald Kelly. McDowell, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bagnar?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no items of old business who will move directly into new business. First item is PC Resolution, PC thirty-three dash twenty-four. Final plat, Bush Creek subdivision, thirty-seven point twenty-one acres. This is map twenty-three parcel fifty-one. Current zoning is RS fifteen. Property owner is AI Home Builders. Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve PC thirty-three twenty-four. Kelly? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pape? Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report?
Allison Corolla with T-Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of A1 Home Builders a final plat for the entirety of the Brush Creek subdivision. Brush Creek is a residential subdivision development consisting of forty-five lots, two new public rights-of-way, four open spaces, three detention ponds, and all necessary stormwater and wastewater infrastructure. The proposed land use within Brush Creek subdivision is single-family detached residential. The parcel, tax map twenty-three parcel fifty-one point zero zero, is zoned RS fifteen, single-family residential, and contains thirty-seven point two-one acres. The property for Brush Creek subdivision is not located within a flood hazard area. The development occupies most of the parcel within the southern portion of the property, where the presence of severe topography is minimal compared to the northern portion of the parcel. The developer has designed the subdivision to minimize the impact of the severe topography. The design and layout contain three stormwater detention ponds, four open spaces. The two open spaces located in the western portion of the property encompass the area of severe topography. The two open spaces are in the northeast corner within an area of steep topography between lots eight and nine. The four open spaces in total are sixteen point three-three acres. The surrounding properties, the properties to the north and west are located within Williamson County and are zoned MGA one and MGA five and contain single-family residences. The properties to the south are zoned RS forty, single-family residential, R twenty-one and two-family residential, and commercial general. The R twenty zone lots are located within section two of Brush Creek subdivision. The RS forty lots have frontage onto Fairview Boulevard, Tennessee Highway one hundred, and are located within section one of Brush Creek subdivision. The commercial general zone properties are located to the southeast of the proposed Brush Creek subdivision and is the location of a launcher gate systems. The Fairview Forward twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this property as rural settlement. The rural settlement classification notes the appropriate land use are agriculture and single-family detached residential. The classification lists several zone districts as appropriate. I will note that RS fifteen is the existing zoning. It was in place prior to the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And so this does not fall within the appropriate zone districts per the twenty forty plan, but it was zoned that way prior to the adoption of the twenty forty comprehensive plan. The appropriate zones are AR fifteen, AR five, RS forty, or RSM forty. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for Brush Creek subdivision in order to create forty-five single-family residential lots, extend Fairlon Drive, create two new public rights-of-way, Brush Creek Lane and Brush Creek Court, install a cluster mailbox and associated parking areas, create four open spaces, create three detention ponds, and install all necessary stormwater, water and wastewater infrastructure as we submitted on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have? Do we have a representative tonight? Thank you. Could you please state your name and company?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Corolla from T-Square Engineering. We're at one eleven Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on behalf of the developer.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'll open this up for Planning Commission comments or questions.
I have one. Can you just give us a recap of your wastewater and stormwater mechanisms and how you plan on to keep those amenities safe for citizens here in Fairview?
Yeah, absolutely. So all of our stormwater and grading areas comply or in full compliance with the stormwater manual regulations. They regulate that all of our ponds have at least one foot of freeboard at the hundred-year storm. And so that's important because even at the hundred-year storm, effectively, we're saying that we're not flooding any of these houses. We're not discharging onto any of the other properties at a higher rate than what is currently discharging. So that kind of addresses the stormwater piece of that. The sanitary piece of this is actually, as a part of this development, WADC required us to upgrade the existing pump station and effectively relocating the existing pump station. So there is an existing pump station just on the highway on the other side of Brush Creek where it ties in with the highway. That pump station is failing effectively and is terribly unsafe. I'm sure you guys have driven by and, you know, are aware of the location and the immense slopes that surround it. And so it's unsafe for WADC vehicles to pull in. And so as a part of this development, WADC asked us to create a regional pump station on our site. So effectively, this pump station does not just serve this development. This pump station reroutes all of the sanitary that is currently going to that pump station, treats all of it on our property through our pump station, and then sends it back to the existing line that runs along the highway. So this was a much larger pump station than you would typically see on just a forty-five lot development because we're including the flow of the rest of the homes in order to make sure that all the residents in Fairview have adequate sewer. Yes, sir. Did that answer your question appropriately?
Any other comments, questions? All right, thanks, Ms. Corolla.
Thank you.
Ms. Howard, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bagnar?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight to zero. Next on the agenda tonight is PC Resolution, PC thirty-four dash twenty-four. This is to remove the condition of approval number three from PC forty dash twenty-three Bellhaven, which is a two-hundred-and-fifty-one acre, map twenty-one parcel twenty-one, and map eighteen parcel forty-one. Current zoning is RM eight, PUD. Property owner is WUSF for Bellhaven LLC. Do we have a motion on the floor for PC thirty-four dash twenty-four?
I make a motion that we find the development plans submitted with this development plan application to not be in substantial compliance with the controlling documents.
Mr. Pape, that's an inappropriate motion. The request tonight is to remove the condition three, and that's the request that's before this Planning Commission. This Planning Commission only has the power under the zoning code and only can respond to applications. So an appropriate motion would be either to affirm the request and remove it, to modify the condition, or to deny the request.
The applicant submitted a development plan application. It's listed in the staff report as a development plan application. I don't find anything in our ordinance that permits or anything in our procedures or any application that we have that allows for simply the removal of a condition. Also, I don't-
The motion would be to deny the condition. That's the appropriate motion, not to-
But the challenge is, the challenge with that is if we're going to simply remove the condition, then we're going to assume that the underlying approval still would have been the same. A conditional approval, the condition is put in place before that was voted on. And so, well, can I finish, please? You're assuming, and nobody can know how that vote would have turned out if that condition was not part of that approval. Also, there are people on this board who were not there that night who likely, you know, may not have voted for it in any way at all. Me personally, if I vote either way on this for removing the condition or not, it could be construed that I somehow support that it is in substantial compliance with their, which they're clearly not. And as a Planning Commission, we can make a motion to act any way we want if we're acting reasonably.
You have to rely on the applications that are made before you and your authority as an administrative body- is strictly under the zoning code. The application or request tonight is to remove the condition. You can either approve the removal of the condition, deny the condition, or modify the condition, or you can abstain from voting if you don't feel like you can vote.
So where in the zoning-
Are fine.
Where in the zoning ordinance does it allow for an application for only removal of a condition versus a development plan application?
It's Tennessee state law, and that's the request they've made tonight. If you do not like the request, then you can vote to deny it. But the motion you made is inappropriate.
As a point of order, Mr. Pape, as a restatement here, the Planning Commission is an administrative body. So our actions are resulted into a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will then act as our legislative body for the city. So my recommendation is we need to act on a motion that addresses the condition, which is what is on the docket here. The agenda which we reviewed, we all voted on and approved.
We all didn't vote on it, but yes.
Voted on the agenda for tonight, which, and the agenda is, as stated, we are voting on this condition number three. So I agree with Mr. Carter. We either have to approve it, deny it, or recommend a modification. And again, this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, which would be the-
Actually, it's not in this case. It's a removal of our condition, one way or the other. But I made a motion. If nobody seconds it, that's up to everybody. So that's my motion.
We have a second on Mr. Pape's motion. Okay, initial motion does not carry. Do I hear another motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
A motion to deny. Second. Donald Kelly. Great. Mr. Greer, would you please read the staff report?
Bellhaven is a proposed neighborhood on two-hundred-and-fifty-one acres containing a mixture of single-family detached residences and attached townhomes. Also, the neighborhood contains a two-point-six-one acre location for an amenity center along with one-point-two-five miles of walking trails. Of the two-hundred-and-fifty-one acres, ninety-point-seven-five acres, thirty-six percent of the site is designated as open space with an additional thirty-point-zero-nine acres set aside for a sanitary drip field. The neighborhood contains four-hundred-and-eighty-four total homes on three different-sized, single-family detached lots. The lot sizes are type A, ninety-five by one-fifty, type B, seventy-five by a hundred-and-thirty, and type C, fifty-seven by one-twenty. The overall density of the proposed neighborhood is one-point-nine-three units per acre. Mr. Sean Henry has submitted a request on behalf of D.R. Horton to remove condition of approval number three from Planning Commission Resolution number forty dash twenty-three. That resolution is on the screen tonight with the condition of approval listed. The development plan for Bellhaven development was approved by the Planning Commission at the December ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. The Planning Commission approved the Planning Commission Resolution number forty twenty-three that contained three conditions of approval related to the Bellhaven development. Staff included one of the conditions of approval, which is the development plan shall be vested for three years from the date of approval. This condition of approval was retained as part of the project approval, and the Planning Commission added two additional conditions of approval. Condition of approval number two that was added by the Planning Commission is revise and resubmit traffic impact studies with each phase. Condition of approval number three that was added by the Planning Commission is development agreement approval required by BOC regarding share of road improvements before any final plat is recorded or approved. To comply with condition of approval number three, the developer has submitted two different development agreements for review and consideration by the Board of Commissioners. The first development agreement was presented at the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting along with Resolution twenty-two twenty-four. Following discussions, the development agreement was deferred. The following month, at the June sixth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting, Resolution twenty-two twenty-four was brought back before the BOC with a revised agreement. The revision to the agreement was the developer's contribution amount had increased from two-point-five million to two-point-seven-five million. Following in-depth discussions, the Board of Commissioners voted to not approve the development agreement. On August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, a letter from Mr. Sean Henry was submitted to the Planning Department requesting the Planning Commission to consider removing condition of approval number three from Resolution number forty dash twenty-three. That letter was provided to you through IDT. And you've had ample time to review that over the last few weeks. The staff recommendation is due to this request being related to a condition of approval- due to this request being related to a condition of approval added by the Planning Commission as part of the approval of the development plan at the Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty-three. Planning Commission staff is not providing a recommendation. Tonight, you were also handed a letter, an email, provided to myself, city attorney Patrick Carter, Mr. Pitts, representing D.R. Horton, and Ms. Tiffany, gonna butcher her last name, with Reagan Smith. And the email states, Ethan attached, please find a new memo for the Bellhaven Traffic Engineer summarizing the previously approved traffic impact study. That memo is provided on Reagan Smith, the Reagan Smith document along with this email. The roads surrounding the project remain in need of improvement for current traffic, even if Bellhaven is never built. Point two, the Bellhaven Traffic Impact Study recommends turn lanes and traffic signal at the intersection of Northwest Highway and Highway ninety-six without traffic from the Bellhaven development. The city intends to add turn lanes as part of the Northwest Highway improvements, but a commitment to fund and perform that roadway work is uncertain. Item three, D.R. Horton will be required to construct its entrance from Highway ninety-six to TDOT standards, including a right-turn lane, left-turn lane into the development. All other Bellhaven streets linking existing city roads will be built to the city of Fairview standards. Four, there is no rationale nexus, no rough proportionality for the city to require D.R. Horton to construct or pay for improvements that already need to be made for existing traffic. That need is not arising from Bellhaven's traffic impact. Mr. Henry states, my client reiterates the current request to remove condition number three from PC Resolution forty twenty-three. However, if the Planning Commission desires to replace that condition, D.R. Horton will accept the following substitute text. Quote, if the city of Fairview does not construct the turn lanes and traffic signal at the intersection of Highway ninety-six and Northwest Highway, Jingo Road, then D.R. Horton will install these roadway improvements when permitted by TDOT, end quote. And Mr. Henry is here tonight to answer any questions along with representatives from D.R. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a representative tonight of the applicant? Sir, would you please state your name and company?
Sir. Chairman, Mayor, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Sean Henry. I represent D.R. Horton. Representatives of D.R. Horton are here tonight as well as the property owner, the Walton Group. Yes, we filed this application after really running into a brick wall to satisfy the condition that we're talking about here tonight. That brick wall being the Board of Commissioners really would not approve the development agreement that we had negotiated in good faith and presented to that board. And so we could not and still cannot get that development agreement approved. So that leaves us with a condition of approval by this commission that cannot be satisfied. And so we're in front of you, and I realize there's new faces on this commission since I was here last. So welcome, welcome to the Planning Commission. But our objective here tonight is simply to raise the issue in front of you that when the Planning Commission imposes a condition that cannot be satisfied by the applicant, we have nowhere else to turn. And so we've come back to you to explain to you that the development agreement as written and required cannot be accomplished, cannot be satisfied. And just as a backup, just as a rewind for a second, we now have, as Mr. Greer just pointed out, and actually, I'd like to, I guess it's already filed for the record, but to the extent that it's not, I just want to be sure that this updated letter dated today. This is a memo from Tiffany Reed. She simply is summarizing with a fresh date, you know, today's date, what she had already prepared and submitted to the city and which was approved. And in reliance on that traffic impact study, as you can see, the development plan was reapproved last year and has a vested right for the next three years. And in this letter, she simply points out the traffic impact study conclusions are still applicable. And the only true impact that this project has is at the intersection of Northwest Highway and ninety-six. And we understand that the city is planning in some form to make improvements there. And so what D.R. Horton is committed to do is we'll satisfy our traffic impact by installing the turn lanes at that intersection and the traffic light at that intersection. And the whole reason we got into a development agreement in the first place was the concern that if the city's marching forward with a roadway improvement project, including that intersection, it makes little sense to have the developer go out there and do it, and then the city comes back later and maybe tears up what's been installed and redoes it as part of their overall streetscape improvement project, which is not only that intersection, but runs down Northwest Highway for some distance. So the purpose of the development agreement was- So the purpose of the development agreement was, let's not have the city and the developer trying to do the same thing. Let's come to an agreement whereby the city simply instead of doing the work, would pay that contribution into the city. City takes those funds and uses those funds for its roadway project. But the impact and the valuation of the impact of D.R. Horton is tied to that intersection and that intersection only. The study concludes that there's not enough traffic generation coming from the Bellhaven Development to require any turn lanes at Elrod Road, at Dice-Lampley Road, at Cox Pike, and at the project access point with Northwest Highway. So that's the conclusion of the traffic engineer. And to date, there's been no countervailing evidence to contradict that. There's been nothing submitted in the record in front of this Planning Commission, in front of the Board of Commissioners twice, by licensed engineers, licensed traffic engineers to step up and say, that traffic impact study that was approved is incorrect. And I would venture to submit that there's probably not any of that evidence tonight. So we're here because our client wants to move forward with a development that's been approved. It's been approved. And we want to move forward and get this thing going. So that's my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions. And if you have detailed questions, you know, I probably can't answer any real specifics, but the team is here and can help, particularly anyone that was not on the commission last year when we were here. So thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Henry. I have a couple of quick opening comments for the Planning Commission. Mr. Carter, in your opinion, is it a common condition that a requirement such as this being a development agreement between an applicant and a city to be established for cost terms, is that a customary act?
When there's work to be coordinated, such as required improvements, yes, it would be a typical sort of agreement where, so work is not being done by the city and the developer, and they're not working at cross purposes. And that really is the main thrust of the condition. At the dollar amount, if, depending on who does the work, if the city is going to do the work as part of the larger Northwest Highway project, or if the city is not, then it would make sense for the developer to do that work. But that was really why that condition was added by this body at that time. And as far as I know, that that has not changed.
Okay.
City still plans to pursue Northwest Highway, and there needs to be some resolution between the BOC and the developer on the work, how much it's going to cost.
In your opinion, if this condition were to be either removed or reaffirmed, is there still a continued shared responsibility by both the applicant and the city that would have to be resolved by the Board of Commissioners moving forward?
I think if, the Board of Commissioners, as far as I know, still wish to move forward with the Northwest Highway project. So it needs to be resolved between this developer and the city on when that work is going to occur, who's going to do the work, and how much that work's going to cost. I think the traffic study tells us that that work is going to cost about 1.3 or 1.4 million. Our planner and our engineer have looked at that. They can, and they spoke at length at prior meetings, they can agree with this point or not agree with this point. But in the big picture, there's not much movement on that number. The developer has did indeed forward a development agreement that the Board of Commissioners, to this point, has not accepted. So I think that answers your question in a roundabout way, perhaps.
It does. Thank you, sir. Just a couple of other quick questions, just to try to establish our topic here. Mr. Henry, with the conditional approval established in December of last year, the first offer or agreement draft that was presented by the applicant to the city wasn't until May. That's five months. You know, we're now sitting at 10 months from the original condition, almost a year. Why the delay in having that initial offer presented if time is of the essence?
Yeah, I can't explain that. I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay. There were previous offers, though, correct, by the applicant, as far as, when I say offer, listed burdens that the applicant was willing to pay towards the shared arrangements, correct?
Yes, and let me just clarify that this Planning Commission did not dive into what the elements of the development agreement would or would not contain.
I'm just trying to establish, because it's brought back to our commission, so we're just trying to understand the facts that we can correctly make our decision.
Yeah, my understanding, I was not involved in those meetings, but there were meetings between the engineering staff and our client and staff to figure out, how do we arrive at an equitable number? And that's what those meetings were about. And yeah, there was some challenge in trying to figure out, how do we arrive at that figure? How do we arrive at what that's going to be?
Okay.
And but the point is, it was arrived. It was arrived. So the development agreement had a figure in it, agreed to by staff, city staff. Both development agreements had a figure agreed to by staff, so.
Only thing I would say about that is staff, obviously, and I'm talking about Ben and others on staff, but they don't have the ability to agree to anything. They can work and arrive at a number that they believe is appropriate and then present it to the BOC. But I think agree is the wrong word, Mr. Henry.
No, I agree. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That's absolutely true.
Then my last clarification, then I'll open it up for comments, questions. You made a statement, Mr. Henry, that the the agreement cannot be satisfied between the applicant and the Board of Commissioners. In your opinion, is it unsatisfactory because one party doesn't agree with the value amount? Or that it's reached a point where you've exceeded the ability to have a development agreement? Could you just clarify your statement of why it's unsatisfactory at this point?
There was an open book attitude at the Board of Commissioners. That the checkbook was going to be open and at some point, the developer is just going to have to pay the ransom or decide not to do that project. And in this case, they still want to do the project, and they're coming back to this board to let you know that the amount that was in two development agreements, which increased each time, was not approved. And talked about, I mean, we don't want to get bogged down with valuations. I think that's beyond the scope of what this, you know, this session is about. But what's important is the law kicks in when there's an exaction being demanded of a developer or property owner that is in far excess of the impact of the development project. And that's what we, finally, my client said, okay, we're exceeding that reasonable contribution to off-site roadway improvements. So there has to be a connection, whatever the figure is. Figure's not important.
Right, and nor is it really to this commission either. But so it's unsatisfactory because the applicant and the Board of Commissioners didn't come to an agreement, so it's brought back to the Planning Commission. Mr. Carter, since this commission has no legal action regarding that step?
So, I mean, this commission is an administrative body of appointed officials. None of you were elected. I know that the mayor was elected, but not in her role as the Planning Commissioner, and same thing with Mr. McDonald. This is an appointed body. This is not a body that can make, that can enter into contracts or agree on sums of money. This body's authority is strictly limited to the zoning and development code. And so, I mean, that's back to where we started. This body can either agree to remove the condition, can agree to not, or can vote to not remove the condition, leave it as it is. This board could modify the condition perhaps, or, and those would be the three main choices.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. So as a reminder to this Planning Commission, as I open this up, we are talking about the condition that was placed here. We cannot establish values, cost, burden, or time. That would be, you know, in a development-type agreement. So comments, questions?
I have a question.
Williams.
I appreciate your analysis. Thank you. I'm just curious. If there was a conflict with cost, why would we add the addendum that D.R. Horton will accept the following subtext? In the last sentence, we'll install these roadway improvements when permitted by TDOT.
Oh, you're referring to my email today?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, you're asking, so the point of this text is to put definition on really what condition number three does not define. Okay, the condition number three is just, go figure out a development agreement that you can agree on with the Board of Commissioners. What we're suggesting is, let the buck stop here with this Planning Commission, because you are an administrative body reviewing a planned development. Not a zoning, it's not a rezoning issue, it's not a legislative process. And so that condition is so undefined, what we're suggesting is, if you want to define it and tie it to the traffic impact study that was approved, we're happy to do that. And so that language is really just taken out of today's letter from the traffic engineer, Ms. Tiffany Reed. And that text is putting into your resolution what the TIS is requiring anyway, which means D.R. Horton will go out there and make those roadway improvements at that intersection. And of course, it requires TDOT approval because TDOT controls State Route 96.
I thought it was a substitute that you were adding.
It can be, it can be. Absolutely. What I was suggesting is, the developer cannot live with the condition as written. And so what we're asking you to do is remove the condition. If there's no support for removing that condition, we're offering you a substitute text that would be acceptable. I'm sorry, that wasn't clear. Thank you.
All right. I've got a couple of questions. First directed at the city staff. Can you provide a definition of the scope of work referred to as the roadway improvements that D.R. Horton was supposed to share the monetary value of?
Yeah, I can. The TIS says that the turn lanes and traffic signal at Highway 96 and Northwest Highway-
I guess I'm talking about before this email came through that-
That has always been what the TIS said. And so, but what city staff did, and knowing that the city was going to engage in a redevelopment or a redoing of Northwest Highway, this part of the work would be part of the Northwest Highway. And so what the developer did is they, and knowing, and this work in dollars six months ago would cost about 1.4 million, the developer, in order to try to move the project forward, offered an additional sum and told the city, you can use the money to do this, and then any other part of it on this Northwest Highway that you want to. But that's where the rub has been with the BOC, is just over the amount. And I've made a recommendation to the BOC that's not really part of this meeting and not this board's concern. But I think that answers your question.
Yes, I mean, it was my understanding that there was a lot more improvement upon Northwest farther down, not necessarily just at the intersection, but and, I mean, kind of leads into my second question of, what is the standard and what is the precedence that we've set for developments as far as roadway improvements directly in front of their developments? Where their property runs along the road?
The law says that when a developer builds a development, there's a traffic study done, and the traffic study will show what the increase in traffic will be because of that particular development and the number of units and the trip count, et cetera, et cetera. It's an entire science that I don't pretend to understand or be even proficient in. But what the traffic study concluded is that it did not change the rating of those intersections further down, and that the improvements that were required by this traffic study are the ones to the turn lanes and the traffic signal. But the city, as part of a larger project, wants to widen and improve Northwest Highway further down. And that traffic, or that's not really, this developer hasn't caused that need. That need preexisted, this developer.
And I understand that. I guess I'm speaking more to, and I mean, Ethan, maybe you can jump in as far as, you know, looking at the Cumberland Estates, looking at the Aiden Woods Developments along Crow Cut, where they're adding curb and gutter, repaving the road, doing improvements like that. Not necessarily what is coming out of the traffic impact study, but just kind of what we've set as a standard of the city. I mean, what does that typically look like, Ethan?
Typically, developments have added curb and gutter and improved their side of the road frontage that they have along their existing right-of-way that exists currently within the city. You named off a couple of different developments. Cumberland Estates repaved Cumberland Drive in front of their development and added curb and gutter along Cumberland Drive. Aiden Woods is doing the same thing along Crow Cut. Otter Creek did the same thing along Old Nashville Highway, and so-
So is that scope included in this discussion as far as the road improvements defined in the?
Those improvements are not included in their traffic impact study as being required, so they are not required in this case.
Whatever they build has to be the city standard, so if the city standard is curb and gutter, then it would be curb and gutter, I think, is the answer to that question. I don't think Mr. Henry would disagree with that. It's whatever the city road standards are. That would be the improvement.
That's right. My, D.R. Horton has no problem improving to the current standard of curb and gutter and fresh paving in front of their property on Northwest Highway. The issue, because that helps them, right? It's curb appeal, literally, curb appeal for the home buyers that would want to live in Bellhaven. The issue has always been, and I'll just restate it, does it make sense for the developer to go out there and make those improvements when the city's contemplating widening Northwest Highway to 55 feet of right-of-way, three lanes, which may need more right-of-way than you currently have? And D.R. Horton, by the way, is willing to dedicate right-of-way for that roadway project. That's right-of-way the city doesn't have to acquire to do its project.
Henry, is that dedication already written into some scope of work?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Is that dedication of right-of-way written into any agreement now between the development and the city?
It'll come with the plat that comes to this body. The subdivision plat, when it comes to this body, will address-
But it's related to the road improvements either way, right?
No, we're, yeah, the traffic impact study that we're talking about are off-site, so directly in front of the property is really considered part of the site. We're talking, you know, what we're talking about right now, we're talking about right in front of the property. Traffic impact study talks about off-site improvements, off-site.
Okay. So, and I apologize, sorry to interrupt you. I just want to make sure, Mr. King, we resolve his question, so.
Yeah, and I'm-
Your question was on scope of-
Yeah, and I mean, I guess that's where going with this is kind of back to your original, Mr. Henry, your, one of your original questions. It's just a better definition of the scope of work and what it entails and not so much of an open checkbook. To me, makes sense. I would love to hear the opinion of the rest of the commission of what a modification would look like. The last question, I think, for the city staff would be, is, just a clarification, the stoplight in the intersection of 96 and Northwest Highway, is that something the city is planning to put in, or is that a TDOT improvement that is coming through?
That is currently part of a city project that is ongoing, aligning Northwest Highway with Highway 96 and adding a signalized intersection.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's really all I have. Again, I think a modification makes sense. I'd love to hear from anybody else, other thoughts on that.
Mr. Schilling?
I have a question. In the past, when there has-
I have a question. In the past, when there has been a condition that a sidewalk has to be built in front of something and it really isn't needed and they give it to you to use later, is this comparable?
Referring to the Sidewalk Fund because we often vote on that impact, correct?
Comparable to the extent that you can require a sidewalk if it services the development and is related to the development and the development is expected to have walking traffic. So a sidewalk in a residential development would be an appropriate requirement, but a sidewalk in an industrial zone would not be appropriate. It would be, I think it would be an unlawful exactation.
And also typically, I think, that's when the applicant is requesting to not construct the sidewalk and rather contribute to the Sidewalk Fund. So it is almost that shared use requirement. Mr. Greer? Sorry, I thought you were going to contribute to that. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Schilling? Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I went back and watched our last meeting from December, just to refresh my own memory on exactly what that conversation looked like. There was a part where there was a lot of conversation around the traffic study and individuals had disbelief the traffic study was 100% accurate with theoretical traffic flow versus reality. Once people get there, the roads that they'll decide to use to get to different areas of town, that that might not have been captured within the traffic study. Mr. Owen, who's not here tonight, made mention that after each phase that you all, within your development, that an additional traffic study would be completed, one, to, I guess, cement the findings of the prior traffic study, but also make any adjustments that are needed if there are any. And at that time, he's not here tonight, he's part of your crew, I think he's one of the engineers, said that we would be, I think, to quote him exactly, "We would be in complete agreement with that." I noticed on the email that you had additional traffic studies after phases was not listed as something that, it just wasn't on there. Is that something that you are still open to?
Yeah, I believe condition number two...
Oh, I'm sorry, is it on there?
Covers that. And so, yes, my client's completely open and willing to comply with condition number two. And in addition to that, the traffic light at Highway 96 and Northwest Highway, the traffic engineer says if T.DOT will not, basically, if T.DOT will not approve that traffic light because there's not enough traffic coming through that intersection at that time, my client, D.R. Horton, will continue to update that. It's called a traffic warrant analysis, traffic light warrant analysis. They will continue to do that annually, every year. And so that may not coincide with a phase. A phase may be one year and maybe two years later, but every year, that traffic light's going to be, a new traffic light warrant analysis will be conducted to determine if it's time to turn that traffic light on.
Thank you. Apologies for missing that. I was still, you said the second point on here?
No, it's the second condition of the original.
The condition that they're wanting to remove.
That's the third condition.
They're just, Roger. So earlier you spoke about the, now what's the word I'm looking for? I guess the cooperation between your project and the city when doing a roadway improvement, that it can get messy, right? When the right hand's doing something and the left hand's doing something. So if there was some sort of agreement come to tonight that would adjust this, how would we ensure that those problems wouldn't come in the future? Because this would leave you to do your improvements separate from the city and whatever the city plans to do in that area, correct?
That's right. That's correct. And so the way I've seen this and other jurisdictions get worked out is when the final plat comes forward, and each final plat will come in at different phases, that's the time to look at, what's the city doing at the moment? Has the city funded their project? Is the city under construction? Is the contractor out there doing it? And so it requires close coordination at that point in time. Because as you know, the planning commission establishes a bond and a performance agreement for all the public infrastructure that's being installed, roads, water, electricity, whatever, all of that stuff. So it does require close coordination, and that typically occurs during the final plat stages, which is multi-phased.
I appreciate that response. I guess for me, the reason I made the motion to deny is, as stated previously by, I think, a handful of individuals in the room now, this is an appointed body. We're not accountable to the citizens. We're not put here by the citizens or removed by the citizens. And when we're faced with something like this, for such a large development, the impact unknown, we have a traffic study that we can reference, but that's about all we have to go off of how that is going to change that area. And I know it's gone to the B.O.C. more than once for that discussion to come to an agreement. I guess it just puts on me, I find it to be uncomfortable that this body is faced with such a large decision that could have a pretty sizable impact on the city of Fairview, both financially and functionality-wise, which is why I know it's not possible to have it go to the B.O.C. to make the decision. But it seems as if the buck has been passed back to this body to just be, you know, the buck's passed back here and stops here, and I just, I find that to be unfortunate. But my reason for the denial, I do feel that there is impact of some level. We can, you know, debate what that might be, and I know the traffic studies show what it shows. And I was in favor personally of the agreements that have come before. And to allow such a large development without any contributions outside of the bare minimum just seems inappropriate for me. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a few comments. Obviously, I wasn't on the board in December, did not get a chance to act on the application. I do think it's important that I weigh in tonight on the motion, so I just do want to get on the record. If I had been on the board in December, I would not have voted for it. I don't believe the plans are in substantial compliance. I believe they trigger three out of the eight conditions. Another important thing, in December, everything that was focused on was substantial compliance. And even, you go back and look at, I didn't watch the video, I went back and read the meeting minutes from December, and some of the planning commission members even asked about other parts of our ordinance and different things, and they were instructed that you have to just focus on substantial compliance. And that just seems incorrect to me when you look at 10-203.4, action by the Planning Commission on Site Development Plans and Subdivisions. It's a two-step process. First is substantial compliance. Second is considering all new information that wasn't previously considered, must be reviewed and determined to quality and compliance with the substantive requirements of this ordinance. And so it should have been a two-step process. And everything I read in the meeting minutes, and I intended it, that instruction was not given to the planning commission. I think the vote might have turned out differently if that had been talked about. And, you know, there's several parts of the underlying ordinance that these plans don't satisfy and were never mentioned in the controlling document. So I just want to get that on the record because that's how I would have, that's something I would have brought up in the December meeting. To talk about the motion that's on the table right now, I don't think it's appropriate we remove it. I think anytime an action is taken with conditions, you have no way to know if that underlying action, that approval, would have happened if this condition was not there. And for that reason alone, I think it's important, now that there's different people on this body and we're not able to reconsider all the plans according to Mr. Carter, that we have to leave it in place. And I also feel it's very important that there is a development agreement. This is one of the largest projects, if not the largest in the history of Fairview. There needs to be a development agreement to address all the things that were brought up, right-of-way, sidewalks, different pieces, you know, that's very common in this stuff. And, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about how this board is not really the one, is not the board that negotiates development agreements. So I think it's very important that we leave the condition in place. One thing I will point out with what was submitted to us tonight, the memo, there's been a lot of discussion that the city is going to make these improvements, and even if Bellhaven never happens, that the, you know, the roads still need these improvements. One, nothing is for sure that the city will make those improvements. We're working on plans now, but nothing has been finalized, nothing's been done. So there is the possibility that those plans won't ever happen. Things come up, funding drops out, whatever. So we can't assume that when we act tonight. The other thing is, you know, there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the two things that were submitted. When you look at the Reagan Smith memo by Ms. Reed, and you look at the second paragraph, everybody keeps saying that these improvements are warranted, even if Bellhaven doesn't happen. But you guys are leaving out two words right in the second sentence, kind of in the middle. It says, "The improvements are projected to be warranted even if Bellhaven does not happen." So that's not a definitive fact that these are warranted if nothing happens out there. I drive that road every day, and I could argue if none of these developments happen, we don't need any improvements. Again, it says "are projected to," and those improvements are warranted based on everything that Reagan Smith assumed was going to happen that's been talked about. If nothing happens, then maybe none of them are warranted, and maybe Bellhaven drives the whole thing. We would have to redo the traffic study. And I think that's a suggestion I would make to the Board of Commissioners is to consider having an independent traffic study done in negotiating the development agreement. There's other things like Elrod Road, and looking at our standards, Elrod's fallen apart completely. And if our standards are gutters on both sides, by the time you put those gutters in, you're going to have to put drainage in because that's why the road's falling apart, and then you're going to have to repave the whole thing. So that's significant improvements. And I think there's a lot of things that kind of justify the Board of Commissioners wanting more. Now, I think, again, my recommendation would be to put more science on it, but I think we have to keep this condition in place. I think we have to let the Board of Commissioners work it out. I hate to put it on them, you know, I'd be glad to help in any way. But I think we need to look at, you know, doing another traffic study, looking more in-depth at all the city's standards, and really seeing what's, and you have to forget all the other developments for a minute because we don't know if anything's going to happen, and you got to go back to that "are projected" words, those two words right there, and potentially look at a traffic study with nothing else but Bellhaven and see what else is required and not, and just go into that. So for all those reasons, I think it's important that we pass the motion that's on the floor to not remove the condition.
Yeah, so Ms. Schilling, the motion is to deny removing the condition. So in a moment, we will deny, and then if it doesn't pass, then we can amend with a different motion, if so be, okay? I'm just going to pose a hypothetical question, and I'd like for this input to be given to me from the city staff and the rest of the planning commission. If there's potential time delay in allowing this development to begin, is there any impact to allowing Phase One to commence while the development agreement is in progress with some stipulations applied to that? Understanding we've all talked about some additional traffic studies, what impact would that have against us risk-wise, either from a liability standard, Mr. Patrick, or from a constructibility?
The condition that was placed on Resolution 4023 is a development agreement approval required by the Board of Commissioners regarding share of road improvements before any final plat is recorded. A final plat is typically recorded prior to a project going vertical and plating out the individual lots. And so that condition was left on there as being somewhat open to allow the development to begin with their grading work and tree removal and begin installing infrastructure within the development and having an agreement prior to the recording of the final plat of the first phase.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. So Mr. Henry, from a developer's standpoint, what does your schedule show for when you go vertical?
I have to get someone else to answer that question.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Pitts with D.R. Horton, Land Acquisition Manager. I understand your question. Is it going to... We would have probably a year and a half or so of land development before we would start actually building homes. Are you asking me if we would start that work before a development agreement is in place?
Yes, sir.
I don't see how that would be very prudent for the developer to undertake that kind of expense, knowing that this open-ended condition is hanging out there.
Fair enough. Just want to make sure that we're all looking at every avenue here. Well, I'm going to explain my reaction for tonight. Just as a reiteration of what we've talked about, this commission does not discuss terms and conditions as far as cost related to projects. We rely on the Board of Commissioners to have completed that. I understand there is, has been some negotiations between the developers and the Board of Commissioners with a subjectivity of what satisfaction truly is. It sounds to me like currently there's not a time impact on the project, from what I've heard tonight. There should have been ample time with the initial agreement issued in that there was a delay from our December implication of this condition. Five months passed by before the initial development agreement was presented. I understand there's been two rounds, but the only two rounds. And, you know, we're just now talking about the request of this removal 10 months later. In my opinion, this is a Board of Commissioners discussion. They have that legislative requirement. Our commission here cannot establish that. I currently do not see any other means or methods of modifications to the condition, but I would certainly welcome if anybody has any last thoughts, comments. All right, thanks, sir. So the motion on the table was to deny the request to remove the condition that we applied in December, which means the condition will remain and that the developer and the Board of Commissioners must still negotiate and enter into a development agreement, as we established in December, based on the information, based on the voting that took place in December and the information that we had to make our decisions on that discussion. So would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. McNer?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 2. The condition will remain for the Board of Commissioners to negotiate. Next item on the agenda is PC Resolution PC-3524, Adopt Planning Commission Schedule for February 2025 through February of 2026.
Make a motion to approve PC 35-24.
Callie?
Second.
McDonald? Mr. Greer, would you please help us take a look at this?
Welcome to our small version of rocket science, our wonderful calendar for February of 2025 through February of 2026. Our current calendar runs and picks up January of '25. The earliest submission date on that is in November, and so wanted to try to get ahead and plan out for the next year so that we would have appropriate dates in place. The November meeting, there were a couple of people who were not going to be able to make it. So there was a calendar included in your packet, and there were a couple changes that were made and a calendar was provided. and there were a couple changes that were made, and a calendar was provided to you tonight. The April Planning Commission meeting, I had scheduled for the 3rd Tuesday in April. The correct date is April 8th, 2025, is the 2nd Tuesday in April. And then the November Planning Commission calendar, I had that scheduled for November the 11th, which is Veterans Day. And I moved that date to the 3rd Tuesday, which would be November the 18th. One of the changes that we've made from our current year going into next year is currently we operate on a six-week calendar for our staff. So applicants submit their projects six weeks prior to it coming before you as a Planning Commission. That has had its challenges with our staff, and our limitations to try to schedule meetings with applicants and get everything accomplished within that six-week calendar. And so we have added an additional week in to make it a seven-week calendar. Our initial project's middle deadline is seven weeks prior to the meeting. That gives us a week to review the project's middle. Then we have a staff applicant meeting. That myself, Mr. Chastain, Mr. Broadbent, all sit in. Fire chief sits in. Mayor Anderson sits in as a member of the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners to represent both boards. And the applicants receive staff comments back three weeks after their initial project's middle. So we review it for three weeks to begin with. They get staff comments back. And then we added a week in there for their responses back to us. They previously had one week. They now will have 14 days between receiving our staff comments and their responses back. We'd heard from some applicants, and due to our staff, we had missed our deadline a few different times. And this gives us a little bit of buffer room in there. We also added a column of determination of submittal completion, and that is the Friday before packets go out. It's one week after their final submittal, where we, as a staff, will sit down and make sure and go through all the submittal and determine and let each applicant know if their submittal packet is complete prior to it coming to the Planning Commission. We currently do that operation, but it was not defined in the calendar. And so I wanted to make sure that was a defined date. PC packets go out one week prior to the Planning Commission meeting. And then each night prior to the Planning Commission are the available work session dates, if an applicant so chooses to have a work session. We post those along with our Planning Commission meeting as a calendar openly at the beginning of the year, so that we are not randomly and surprisingly placing work session dates onto your agenda. And so that's kind of a quick breakdown. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Personally, I think seven weeks is extremely reasonable. I think a lot of jurisdictions in the state, maybe even go up to eight weeks. You know, 60-day cycle is not uncommon. So given the amount of work that we're experiencing here, I would personally say that's still commendable, very much so. Comments, questions? All right. Would you please call the vote?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McNer?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve schedule for next year. Thank you very much, Mr. Greer. We have no bonds or letters of credit. Moving on, we will talk about reports and discussions by department. So city planning, Mr. Greer?
Thank you all for your wonderful consideration tonight. And the folks that attended training, thanks for coming out. That training was recorded. If you were not here, I'm happy to provide the training for you. We will have another training coming up on December 10th. That training will be at 5:00 PM. Mr. Carter, welcome back to the states. While you were out, we did schedule a training with your office. Mr. Hogan confirmed that we will be having a training that will be open to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Planning Commission. The topics that I asked him, Mr. Carter's group, to specifically touch on were Robert's rules of order and the areas of interest that each board should be utilizing for their decision-making. I'm sure that they will have a lot of fun, awesome topics that are very engaging for you to listen to that night. And so, just wanted to let you be aware, I will send out an email with that once we get a little bit closer to that. But December 10th at 5:00 PM, right here at City Hall, it will be open to the public. We'll have as many folks as we can, potentially some new faces with the election coming up in November. If there are new Board of Commissioners that are elected, there would be a great opportunity for them to learn as well.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Mr. Dougherty?
I just wanted to say one thing tonight. I just, each and every one of you, I appreciate your service to our community. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineering?
City engineering has no report tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Carter, city attorney?
As far as the training, if there's specific areas or questions that you have that you'd like to be part of that, let me know. I think in addition to what Ethan said, we probably also should talk about vested property rights. And so if there's other things that you are curious about or want to know more about, please email me or Josh Hogan, and we can add it to our list. And we'll be working on that, so just.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, starting with Mr. Pape.
I just wanted to say, big shout-out and great job to the staff for putting together Cota Palooza, and we're going with TPUDC. I think it was a great event, good attendance. We just got to keep going, get as much of the community involved. But great start, looking forward to that. So just great job by the staff, and congratulations. And I know that took a lot to pull that off, so well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Mr. McDonald?
Just thank you to Mr. Chastain for the training tonight. It was always good to have that refresher, have an opportunity to ask questions about our role and how we serve the city. So I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all.
Kelly?
I just echo what these two gentlemen said. Thanks to the staff.
Starting down at the end, Mr. King?
Yeah, just thank you again, Kevin, for the training. Really informative. And to the staff for always being very thorough in their reports and being able to answer any questions we have.
Ms. Williams?
I have to concur. The training was good this evening. Thank you. I was able to learn a lot today, and we're doing some difficult work, but we're doing work for, thinking for it in the future. So I appreciate everybody on the board and the leadership today.
Ms. Schilling?
I missed it, I'm sorry. But I do want to say we will not meet again until the election is over. So tomorrow afternoon, I'm going to put up on Facebook, I am endorsing Dr. Lironda Williams for our state seat. And I think it's just important, I'd love to have somebody who lives here, knows what we need, to represent us.
Mayor Anderson?
I want to thank our staff, our police officers, who always keep us safe in our meetings, Bree for doing all of our visual aids, thank you, and Mr. Carter for all you do. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just echo all the comments. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion.